Meeting it called order at seven oh one, we continue to meet virtually in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic.
This is the twenty fifth peg.
Well.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, rewind for, right, so welcome to Monday, the Monday, October twenty fifth.
Yes.
Meeting of the select board and we're still meeting virtually in light of COVID, right, so. Let's see, scoot down, scoot down, so announcements, meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin. Access channel and YouTube, your voice, image and or phone number may be recorded. All right, so away we go, approval of minutes, so now that we've got the eighteenth out of the way that we didn't meet. Anybody have questions, comments on the October twelfth meeting?
No, I make a motion to approve.
A little second.
All right, motion in a second, no questions, don't I?
Hawkins abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
And Kefi.
All right, two oh, all right, moving down to correspondence. So Ms. Margaret, a letter of support for the Massachusetts Green Future requested by Climate Exchange Education and Research Group.
Unfortunately, I don't know a whole lot about this, this group and their advocacy programs. But the, but what they are requesting is a letter of support for the Green Future Act. That's being considered by the legislature, so I would defer to the board as to whether or not you would like to prepare a letter of support and submit it. In, in favor of the or in support of the act.
With little reading I did on that act, sounded generally good from a high level, but some of the devils in the details. And so I'd like to have at least some more time to look into it, so that we're not accidentally something that sounds good on the surface and is not nearly as good. Below it, I'm kind of hoping it's good below it, but.
I reached out to, to our green communities rep Kelly Brown too on this, and I have not heard back from her. I reached out to her right after this was put onto the agenda, so no feedback from her at this point yet.
Okay, so Margaret, we'll move this, Chris, are you okay with moving it until next week, Scott will weekly enough?
Yeah, I'll look at more.
Yeah, I, I just don't know enough about it and, you know, sometimes I get concerned when I get emails like this.
I know, you're unsolicited, it's like, hey.
Is this a real thing?
Yeah, I know, okay, all right, we will defer a discussion until next, oh god, November. Is it November that our next meeting is, like a board meeting? All right, so moving downward, the textile diversion program, Margaret, I know that you sent this over to Board of Health. Is there really anything that we need to do with this?
There's really nothing that we need to do with it, I, I think this is wonderful that there is textile divert, that there are textile diversion programs, period. And because it is associated with solid waste and the potential to put containers at the transfer station. That's why I kind of forwarded it to Board of Health, because they would have jurisdiction with that. Paul McKelk responded that they will be looking into it, so hopefully they do and we can all get rid of some of our, our old. Clothes that we're not using any longer and other textiles for reuse.
Awesome, all right, then we'll consider this item done, all right. Coming up on general public comment, we have a few folks in the audience tonight. Feel free, any questions, raise your hand, we'll give you a shout out. Right, having seen nothing, it is seven oh five, so let's bring up Chief Calvin. And we'll get him started a little bit on his General Department update report.
I think we're bringing up both chief.
And Eric, yeah.
And Eric, yes, yeah, both of them.
Eric, write the report.
There we go, all right, you got Eric up too, good, well, good evening. All right, so September, I'm, I'm gonna do part of this report and then I'm gonna let Sergeant Shartner. Fill in some of it as well, does it, there was a demonstration and a training that we ran a couple of weeks ago that. That I think would be as good for him to introduce to you and, and it's a technology that's, I think, going to be beneficial to the department. In the future, but September was a kind of an average month, just under seven hundred calls. Twenty-two cases involving criminal charges, motor vehicle crashes were down a little bit with nine, which is nice to see, because we've been running in the. Mid-teens per month, the last several months and even the last year. And, and with our, you know, and that's a number much higher for criminal, criminal charges as well. We've kind of seen an increase in some criminal cases and a decrease in some motor vehicle stops. But some of those motor vehicle stops with the citations actually led to a lot of the, the criminal cases we dealt with in the past month. One thing that we did notice this last month and into October now is a few more in custody, in custody arrests, which we have not. We've not seen especially through the last sixteen, eighteen months with, with COVID. Most of what we had done has been summonses, but we've been running into a lot, a lot of warrants lately, so people that we've, we've been required to take into custody. Fortunately, the courthouse is now functioning, I guess, close to normal, so that they're able to take those people in. Do arraignments during the day, which was very difficult throughout the whole pandemic. At the end of September, we had our annual cell inspection, so the Department of Public Health comes out to every police department. And actually any, you know, the jails everywhere, once a year and inspects the cells for health and safety conditions and concerns. So i- it's without fail that every year we have a few minor boxes that aren't ticked. I don't, I don't think it's possible for them to do an inspection where it's perfect unless it's a brand new facility. Unfortunately, a lot of our violations tend to be the same things because of the age of the facility. You know, we, we've kind of gotten knocked on, this year was, the biggest thing was peeling paint, obviously, we, the facility is twenty years old. Fortunately, Highway and Fred, you know, we got together right away, they've already repainted the floors and the first twelve inches of the, the walls. Of all of ourselves, because we had some paint peeling and that becomes obviously a cleanliness issue and a safety hazard. But where we've really run into problems the last several years is on our sinks and toilets, so we have one piece stainless steel. Toilets, unfortunately, yeah, although they're stainless, they, they rust. And so we end up having rust that has to be ground off every year. And it's one of those things that, you know, Highway doesn't necessarily always have the time to do it. And so it, you know, it pops up every, you know, annually when these cell inspections come out, so this year they've already been cleaned again. But I've, you know, I had a discussion with Fred about it and these are something that, that the town really needs to start to consider replacing. You know, one of the, one of our cells is, is not in service right now, because we had a major leak with one of the toilets and we're still waiting a repair. The other thing that came up was, was just that leaks, so the way our, the faucets work, they're, they're not easy to use. This little, little push buttons to make the water come out of these tiny little, little spouts and. It, it just through, you know, deterioration, it seems like of a lot of seals. They have, they all leak and they drip, which leads to some of the corrosion, so we, we failed on that. A plumber has been out, but we're waiting on a timeline of when those parts are going to be available. And unfortunately, so what I do at the, at the conclusion of the inspection, I send a report back to the, the state. Letting them know how we're gonna correct it and usually it's, it's a few days later and we've rectified everything. So part of that report was that a plumber had come out, looked at it and we were waiting parts. There, there was actually a little pushback this year and they want a, a better timeline of when those toilets are gonna be, be replaced. Fred wasn't in today, I did touch base with him on the phone and he's going to touch base with the plumber this week and hopefully we're gonna be able to get. A better idea when those parts are gonna be in, but with the supply chain issues that are facing the country, I don't, I don't know what we're gonna find. So I don't know what the reaction may be from, from our local health inspector, from DPH. When we're able to give them a reply on the, the timeline. But that, that's something to consider, because the other thing they do when they inspect the cells is they do suicide checks. And they, they look at, basically they take a shoelace and anything that they can hook the shoelace on becomes a suicide. Now, they don't fail the cells as a result of these, because the equipment we have in the cells was built for lockup facilities. But our sinks have a little nubs on it, we have a handicap accessible sink in one of our, in one of the cells, which actually has more of a traditional. Spout on it, so all these things are able to, to catch the, the shoelace on and become a suicide hazard. So again, twenty years ago when the town put them in, they were the latest, they were the greatest and it wasn't an issue. But these, this is again, things to start to, start to consider as, as things move forward. So I know Fred has it on his radar as he looks at the public buildings and the requirements for updates, but it's just something to keep in mind. That they may need to be replaced in the, the near future.
And do you have sort of you in the ballpark we're dealing in, are we talking hundreds or thousands or tens of thousands?
I would say thousands, you know, I, I don't, you know, I definitely wouldn't say tens of thousands. But that's, that's kind of beyond my expertise on what these type of plumbing fixtures cost, there's definitely a limited number of. Companies that, that furnish them, but I couldn't see it, I could see it being thousands of thousands of dollars to, to try and get each one replaced in this three, so. So I mentioned the end of last month's report that in September we had a, a forty-nine-year-old overdose. But again, it just, it just reminds us that it affects everyone at all walks of life, in this situation, a teenage son actually hadn't performed CPR on his father. While waiting for the ambulance to get there, so the heroin epidemic continues to affect our community. As well as the entire region, just to update, we've been going through a part-time hiring process for a little while now. The process began with, we accepted resumes and then with the, the new post requirements that have been coming out. And potentially having to have part-timers pass the same physical requirements that full-timers pass, we actually ran them through those PT standards. So that was our beginning, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we invited sixteen people that night to come out and actually do the PT test. And unfortunately, only seven showed up, so we, we ran all seven through and. You know, we, after, after we completed that, we did a series of interviews and now we're down to two people. I actually tonight gave the letters to Margaret of the two candidates. That we would, we'd like to have appointed, so I believe they will, she will bring those forward to the board next week. You know, both people that have part-time policing experience and that have connections to our community, so I really think that that's, that's important. It's, this may be some of the last part-time police officers or candidates that we're able to bring forward. As a result of police reform, the training that, that those candidates go through had been a. What would have been known as an intermittent or part-time police academy, so it was a reduced number of hours where they took out some of the. Although important, less important things and focused on the most important and that they allowed the, those people to graduate that academy. And be able to serve communities with, with a lower standard of training. So as a result of post, and we've talked about this a few times, that's gone. Anyone going forward from today has to go to the full-time police academy, whether you're gonna be employed full-time or part-time. So that's gonna, you know, greatly reduce the number of candidates, you know, we're already seeing countrywide a reduction in the number of candidates for full-time positions. So now to see that reduction, you know, for communities that rely on part-timers, it, it's gonna change the way business is done. So again, we, we had this conversation before, but just to, you know, as, as we're about to hire the next two and possibly the last two part-timers. No, it's, it's just to be prepared that, that the landscape of policing and hiring and policing is gonna change and has changed. And it's the kind of the community. It's gonna happen, because we, we really have a heavy reliance on part-timers and, and as a result. You know, when you look, you know, regionally with policing and if you were to talk to any of those communities, overtime is out of control. You know, we really have a minimal overtime budget and, and have been able to do that because of the part-timers. So something is gonna have to change to allow things to continue and that's gonna be a challenge for the community in the future.
All right, I'm gonna interrupt you for a minute, Margaret, you had your hand up?
Yes, I have a question for chief, chief, how much did you estimate that the cost to transition your department? Due to police reform would cost over the?
So I had done this year, looking at the four candidates that we had to. Had to train this year and I'm hoping it's only gonna be three, because one will be trained by another entity, but it was about twenty-one thousand dollars this year alone. To, to supply that two hundred and eight hours of training that each one of them are required.
Okay.
The hope is that one of the part-time, part-time officers already works for a college in a full-time capacity. And that they will be completing his training so that the town wouldn't be responsible for that. But if he doesn't continue his employment there, but continues his employment here, we then fall back on us.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that's year one, year two, as, as we look at it now, based on Alf, the alphabet. I think there would be three next year. Based on the two hires that would be coming forward and then. The final year, I believe there would be two, so.
And how much in each of those years?
So that depends on how the contract is settled, it'll go up a little bit more. But it was in that five to six thousand dollars per officer, so probably touch higher, you know, closer to six thousand dollars per officer. One of the benefits we have this year is one of our part-timers is a certified firearms instructor. So as a certified firearms instructor, he doesn't need to go through the forty-hour firearm curriculum that everyone else is gonna be required to go through. So we get, not only do we have a savings there of the, the hours to go through the course, but also the, the purchase of the equipment, the ammunition that needs to be purchased. For them to complete that training.
So when you say year one, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars, you, you're talking FY twenty-two, the current fiscal year.
Current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we had hoped, that potentially some of that ARPA funding could be used for. To be able to, to absorb that cost, because that, you know, as we planned the budget last year, none of this was. You know, we didn't know where we were going, so that wasn't part of our, our planning for, for FY twenty-two.
I will, I will bring this up again in my TA report, because I, I received information today that I need the board to consider, so, okay, thank you.
So I guess with that, I would turn it over to Sergeant Sharter to talk about the, the Bola Wrap training and demonstration that we actually held here at the police park.
Right, so on, on October thirteenth, we held a demo slash training seminar here at Berlin. It's a company we met back in August at the Essential Mass Chiefs of Police meeting. They have a new technology, it's basically a remote restraint device that deploys a seven-and-a-half-foot. Kevlar cable that will wrap a person versus, say, using pepper spray or using a taser. This is a, a minimal. Threat of any potential injury to anybody that we're dealing with, especially in mental health situations. Ironically, the day before, it took seven officers at shift change on one call to subdue one person. That was four Berlin officers and we're fortunate enough to have three Hudson officers come mutual aid. It was ironic, because like, had we had this device then, it could have ended forty minutes earlier and it could have been done with two officers. Versus having seven officers there for over an hour. You know, we have no issue obviously taking time with, with these cases, but this particular device is gonna, is up and coming. It's, we're still waiting for the Minnesota Police Training Council to approve it as part of their defensive tactic standards. So there is some, some, some hurdles we have to pass, currently there's about twenty departments in Massachusetts that do carry them. Even without the MPTC giving their stamp of approval of the device. As we know, sometimes it takes the state a little longer to approve something good. When these, I, I'd say these twenty departments are well ahead of the bell curve. Where we run, you know, two officers per shift, if we had two devices, it'd almost be like having four officers at a scene. We deploy this device, like I said, it's minimally invasive, it's not a painful thing. And it allows us to get in and subdue a subject within three to five seconds after deploying it. So it's similar to a taser, but we're not, we're not exercising energy into a body to, to drop them to the ground. Which is where we run into issues where people do get hurt. But this is for what we call the passive aggressive people, people that aren't coming after us, but yet aren't complying with our commands. And it's definitely, I, I think it's the, the tool of the future, as even the chief has said, it's, it's like the Spider-Man device. I'm not sure if anybody.
That was gonna be my description of it.
Yeah, when we had the training, it was, you know, we deployed over a hundred and sixty cables and. Even people from SWAT teams, we had representatives from, from Western Mass, so the South Shore, North Shore. Cities around Boston and they're all very amped up about it, saying that this is like the, one of the best tools they've seen. You know, they watch videos, it's, it's one thing, but when they actually saw it live, they're like, wow, this thing really works. So, but the downfall to it is the cost, each device is about a thousand dollars. We'd need at least three devices and the cartridges are thirty dollars each. And we'd probably need minimum three cartridges per officer just for training, plus another three to four to have spares on hand. And plus payroll, so, you know, just rough figures, I, I'd say it'd be in between seven and nine thousand to actually bring this piece of equipment on. During this training, we did send two officers to the train the trainer, the portion of, of it. So we do have two officers in-house that can train the rest of the department.
I was gonna say, one thing I would say is that, yeah, where it does come with a, a price tag, you know, seven to nine thousand dollars, looking at equipment costs and officer costs. I mean, if you're to consider one incident that goes bad. Where there's an injury to an officer, an injury to a subject, that, that's seven to nine thousand dollars as a, you know. At least an initial startup cost and then there'd be some ongoing costs for annual recertifications and things like that, really becomes minimal.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just, would, would this replace any existing equipment, so they, they add this to their tool belt and we, we remove something else?
It would be something additional, and, and when, when, you know, the sergeant describes it as Spider-Man, I mean, if you all go back to being a kid. Watching Spider-Man shoot a web out of his wrist and wrap somebody up, it's exactly what it does. Cable wraps up your arm so that you can't fight, you know, when you, so when you look at mental health situations where, where, you know, we've had experience here. And having to go hands-on that sometimes end up, you know, turning the person combative, you know, this allows us to take that away. So that they, they can't raise their fists, they can't, you know, they can't try and strike somebody, same thing, or if you're able to wrap up the legs. They may be able to try and strike, but there's no force behind it, because they don't have space to, to be able to take action or to, to support themselves.
And so, we don't have any passive tools now, we don't have tasers or anything like that in our.
We do have tasers. But again, now, now a taser is, you know, a taser is a pain compliance thing, so now we take someone, we take someone who's in mental health crisis. We need to make sure that they, they don't harm themselves, they don't harm somebody else and they get the treatment they need, you know. It, it, after a certain time, it, it requires, unfortunately, we go hands-on, you know, we're not justified in using a taser. You're not actively resisting.
I'm sold on this, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where there might be cost savings and training savings, because every tool the officers carry, they need to be trained on. And so, writing something else to the tool belt, that's more training hours, we're not also removing something to the tool belt.
Is that this gets accepted by the Training Council and becomes a normal course of training. And, and that takes time, I, as you look at initial officer training now, they never trained in the academy with rifles. That's now a normal course of the, of the police academy, the hope is that the next step, because almost every agency in, in the Commonwealth is carrying tasers. That that's gonna become part of basic recruit training and, and part of in-service training, so some of that cost could be absorbed through other ways.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, we can absorb this cost if we incorporate firearms and the Bola Wrap together. Because at the range, we do have a lot of downtime and that was kind of my, my ideology behind training two officers. So that we could have people there training simultaneously, so we're not adding like another day of training. You know, we all love overtime, however, we also like to have time with our, our family and our off time too, so. You know, I think the biggest advantage, we can, we can, it's almost like CPR and AED, like I referred to this piece of equipment, it'll be like your AED. You take it with you when you go out on duty and it's in your car, you know, you take it out when you get that call. It's not something we're gonna be carrying on our person for an entire eight hours of the shift, we just, we don't have any more room on our belts to carry anything else.
So, may I ask a question?
Of course, always.
All right, I, rather than keep everyone in suspense, I received a call this afternoon and I, I don't mean to. I'm, I'm hearing all these, you know, these costs, which right now are rolling up to about forty thousand dollars between the cell upgrades. The Bridge Academy training, the Bola Wrap, and I received a call this afternoon from our state rep, Meg Killcoin. Saying that she needs something by tomorrow, noon at the latest, and I want to leave all options open. Because they're looking at allocating state ARPA funds to municipalities and they're looking to do earmarks. But she needs something by tomorrow at noon, I was gonna bring this up in my TA report, but with all this discussion on costs. I, I, I wanted to bring it up and I, I'd love to put something together for her in this really short timeframe. But anyway, that, I, when, you know, when we're talking about these costs and, and we can't use. Items that are already going to town meeting through CPA, we cannot do design engineering, because infrastructure is excluded. From the state reallocation, so I'm just trying to think of creative things that we could ask, we could ask for that.
Grade of the cells could be.
Important to the community.
Yeah, that could be something important, I mean, that's definitely a liability issue. So that's, there's definitely more painting, the whole place should be painted, we only painted three cell floors and then adding in the. The cost of the potential cost of the toilets, that's something that maybe Fred could get a quick cost from the plumbing inspector tomorrow. If he, if he knocked home, so.
When you're marked for violations, you know, in the cell for insurance purposes, when, you know, the, the suicide. Prevention type stuff, that's, that's type of stuff that is not only in the interest of the community, but I think it's also in the interest of. Town, mitigating town liability exposure.
Absolutely.
All right, so Margaret, what do you need from Eric or Tom by tomorrow?
I, if, if, if the board supports looking at this, I need a summary on all three of those items. I need, I need a summary before noon tomorrow on the Bola Wrap and, and why it's needed. I mean, that the connection to mental health issues is, is going to be extremely important there. Bridge Academy training, I don't know whether or not that is a qualified expense, but because we don't have any other ready. Funds ready to allocate to it, we want, I want year one costs for Bridge Academy training. And then finally, the cell upgrades, so we're looking at about fifty thousand, I want to give them something that's about fifty thousand dollars. Is that possible to pull together by tomorrow before noon?
I think so, now, I'm just, just doing a quick search right now, I can see that it's about three thousand dollars per toilet. So, whatever install cost.
And, and we don't need written estimates, but we do need the reasons why the, the work is needed and, you know, so we, it can support our request.
Okay, I think that's something that the sergeant and I can get together in the morning and, and start to put together a quick little narrative for you.
Okay, it does, and, and as long as the board supports moving in this direction since it's very last minute, let's, okay.
And can I just ask you, Tom, do you need to replace the toilets with metal toilets again?
So that's one thing I looked for before and. That's kind of this, you know, for cleanliness, I didn't, you know, I haven't seen anything that's like a plastic or anything along those lines, everything that's designed for. Cell or lockup type uses is stainless steel.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, because they don't want anything that, that potentially someone could go in and break and then have something that they could harm themselves or harm somebody else with. So that takes the ceramic out of it and a lot of the plastics out of it.
And new stainless steel takes years before it starts rusting, I mean, ours is twenty years old, so it's lost some of its luster, so to speak.
And, and we had some issues with the wells seven, eight years ago, which, you know, when, I know Keith had the well relined and we had some sodium issues. At that point, I think that, that definitely didn't help the situation.
Well, and even leaks, you know, if you have leaks like you had, I would definitely support these, these things. For giving to Meg tomorrow.
I mean, Margaret, some of the items that Tom mentioned may be covered in the eighty-eight grant that I put forward, but you know what, I'd rather have double the money. And maybe we get it back than to assume that we're gonna get it and we don't, or we only get a smidge and it needs to go somewhere else.
Okay.
Right.
All right, again, Meg said she needs it by noon at the very latest tomorrow, because it's going to their committee, I believe. Their, their house is gonna be voting it on Thursday, so she needs it by noon tomorrow.
All right, yeah, we'll get together first thing in the morning and we'll, we'll put together a little narrative for you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so we're running about ten minutes behind, we have two other items, I've got a question for Eric or Tom. But is there anything else on your report? But is there anything else on your report that you want to bring up?
I think the last thing. Our our new admin started today, so I'm sure if you guys get a chance to stop by, say hello.
Tom, did you have any, anything to add from the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting?
Last one, no, now, let's see. What did we talk about at the last one, Margaret?
Well, you were talking about a streamlined process for sign requests.
Oh, yeah, so the, that's right. So we we have the street sign request form. That once it goes out, it goes to the police department, it goes to the fire department, it goes to the highway department. And then we all either sign off or not. But all three of those departments are represented on the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting, uh, committee. We thought and we talked in the in the meeting that it made sense to. Maybe eliminate the 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 sign-offs and just have it be signed off with a recommendation from the committee. Because you're getting the input from all three of those those agencies already.
Right.
So ju- just a thought to to maybe streamline the process.
And and then there was, there was. No parking signs and in an emergency, the select board would. Approve, but otherwise it goes to Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, is that, am I correct?
Um, so we could, so no parking in any signs would be would be approved by. The Traffic Safety, but we can do temporary no parking, like by order of the police department. So we wouldn't go to them, we would go through the police department, because. I think that the temporary and emergency nature of it, we wouldn't have that time to post a meeting and be able to discuss it.
Right. And, let's see, you were gonna, I think probably we've all heard why the overnight parking was not. A good idea for some areas of town.
Yeah, it's just, again, that was something else to consider. I saw when the, when the final parking regulations were. Drafted or were were approved, it included no overnight parking in town.
Yeah.
Really not an issue that we run into, and and we have some areas of town, and really Carderville to to really take a look at, that. There are several residences that have some tiny driveways. And throughout the year, as a normal course of of their day, they they park overnight on the public way. They really don't impede traffic at all, and and then they, those people have been able to work with their neighbors and, you know, especially with Wheeler's Garage. And they are able to get off the road for snow emergencies in the wintertime. So I just think that's something that you may want to reconsider to not have a blanket overnight ban on on parking in town. Like I said, it's just not something we seem to have an issue with, and I think it could negatively affect at least one neighborhood. Where those people are kind of at a, at a struggle to to find reasonable parking as it's. You know, it's really the only area in town where the housing lots are are really tight together. So it makes it even difficult for someone, if they wanted to, to expand their driveway to be able to, you know, absorb more vehicles.
And the, and the, you did mention that at the, at the meeting that. Bylaws are needed for the no jake breaks and.
Yeah, so you, I know you have some signs to approve. If you look at them. Right, I know Fred and I were kind of on the same page with approvals. One of them was a no engine brake sign on West Street. You know, we'd be putting up a sign for something that's legal to do. So, you know, there's been some discussion at the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to come up with a. A jake brake restriction in town or an engine brake restriction in town for for trucks. I know some of the the residents in in the center of town are having an issue with it, as well as on West Street. You know, there's. There's really no reason with the way our roads are set up, that trucks need to use them, they just choose to use them. And there are some communities that have. Developed bylaws to restrict the use within town. You know, there there is a provision in most of those bylaws that if it's an emergency situation, that can be utilized as a defense. And, you know, we wouldn't want a trucker that, you know, someone cuts them off or something along that, and they don't use it because there's a, you know, a potential violation. But that that way, we wouldn't be putting signs up to try and regulate something that's not yet prohibited. So.
Chris, you done?
Yep.
Scott, you got anything?
I was just interested in the follow-up of the. Body cameras, so there's now been the article in the item, has there been other feedback? I'm finding any technical problems, are they solving problems for us?
Uh, we've, we've had a couple of technical problems with unfortunately Windows updates. So that every time there's been a Windows update, it turns the firewall back on and doesn't allow officers to. Import their video from the camera to the server. So we've got a pretty basic set of instructions on how to, you know, fix that every time a update comes out. And we just noticed a problem with one of the cameras this week, that the date's wrong. And it's interesting that it's the Molly, our newest officer's camera, that the date's wrong. So that's something that they're gonna need to look into. The other update with that is we we received a letter. About a week ago from the the trial court and a representative from the district attorney's office out of Worcester. That they're they're concerned and they want to start to work with the departments on. The digital media and how they're gonna handle it, because now that there's a number of agencies that are starting to to utilize the cameras. They know that their request, they're gonna need them as part of discovery for all the cases. So they're, they're starting to work with the agencies on how that's gonna be handled. So Sergeant Gilchrist handles all the discovery. For us right now, so I I actually just gave him that letter to work with the trial court on on the distribution of that digital evidence. You know. Fortunately, the system we have allows for us to create some lengths to be able to send to them. So it should be a relatively simple process so that we're not burning CDs or utilizing thumb drives to to burn, to to. Send these videos to court, that it's a way that the the district attorney's office has immediate access right into the system just for specific videos.
I've got a final follow-up question because now we're running really behind. So over the weekend, I was approached by a resident in. Our favorite little building on Linden Street. There were a couple of people that attempted to tag the building yet again. The neighbor, Les Ssole, went running out, camera in hand, said, what are you doing? The. Spray cans were dropped and said, oh, nothing. The resident took a photo of the car, took a photo of the license plate, dropped it off with the police department. Was wondering what follow-up has been done, because I told the resident that I would get back to them with an update.
So I know that they they actually went, took the report from them yesterday. Because they called, so I don't know, I wasn't in most of the day today, so I don't know what happened with that call. But that's something I think Eric, you could probably follow up, I think Kevin.
Yeah, I just wrote it down, the detective will be back in tomorrow at three.
So the PD is working directly with the neighbor?
So then, yeah, the neighbor.
Okay.
Ultimately filed, you know, filed the complaint to let let us know that it had occurred, so.
Yes. And obviously I cautioned the neighbor, you know, thanked them profusely for doing that, but also said, please be safe, you know. We'll figure out what to do, so. You know, I'm assuming that there'll be a number left behind, so that if the building does get tagged, again, we can have someone come in and clean it. And or if it starts to get worse, unfortunately, we just may have to start having some discussions on putting fences. Around that building, which would cut down on the trash and cut down on the tagging.
Yep.
Yeah, the last system that came out to clean the building from the state, that's a historic landmark. They could only use certain.
I know.
Things to clean it, it's not something that's easily cleanable, so.
I know, and that's, you know, and that's the problem. I know that highway went down there before and just kind of took some red paint. And got rid of the nastiness on the building, as when you come down Linden, you see it. But I noticed that there was some graffiti and on the building now, again, I don't know what it says. But there's some graffiti on the building, and then there's just the constant trash buildup in the back of the building, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, it's tough, and some people dropped, I mean, there was a, there was like a no wake from like a lake, no wake sign, like a buoy. Large, it was dumped behind there, so it's, yeah, and and unfortunately, it's, it's, you know, where it's state controlled, it's difficult.
Yeah, I know.
Their their resources are limited, and and even though the office that handles it is close by, they're not out a lot to.
Okay, alright, anything else from anyone? Margaret, you good?
We have, well, we have a couple, we have a couple of things that will, on the agenda that involve police. We've got the sign request forms, one of which is not recommended. And then we've got the appointment of interim chief, so I don't know if Chief and Eric are gonna be hanging around for a little bit, but. Okay.
Well, I I mean, if we can get through the appointment at seven twenty and then at seven twenty-five, maybe we can jiggle. And bring that back up, so we're not keeping Eric and Tom too too late. Okay, okay, alright, alright, guys, we'll be, we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, so. Alright, at seven twenty, there is a special event application for the Halloween stroll, yeah, let me move this over here, so it looks like I'm looking at you. Down at the South Commons, the Fields of Parking Lot, thirty-four South Street, this Saturday from two to five. As a rain date of Sunday, weather looks awful. The entire week, events include games, DJs, music, food. Brought forth by Berlin Rec and the Berlin Lions, clean up to be complete by six o'clock that night.
I don't know that we have anybody here for the Halloween stroll, but we do have someone here for the town center trick-or-treating.
That is correct. So do you want, do you want a motion or anything on this one, or do you want to skip it and come back to it?
Well, I would actually suggest all the recommendations of the reviews have been done on the Halloween stroll. So I think you're all set, you'd be able to vote that one.
Alright, can I get a motion?
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, points have already been discussed, Stone Eye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Alright, stroll away, so shout out to Lions and Rec for pulling this together. And then right behind at seven thirty, we have Rebecca, there she is, hi Rebecca. For a special, you know, let me bring this over again, so I'm looking at you, a special event application for a Halloween trick-or-treating. In the center of town, so Halloween night from six to eight, so with that, Rebecca, take it away.
Sure. So the plan was to do trick-or-treating with the nonprofits and the, in the little downtown area. Being Nineteen Carter, the library, the Historical Society, First Parish, Many Hands Thrift Shop. And if there's anyone who is available to do it, we'd love to have eighteen seventy Town Hall as well. We've met with Highway Department, Fire and Police earlier today. And talked about different ways to handle some road traffic closures and some lighting. In order to ensure there's a safe way to walk around in the town center. And we've also, with each of the groups, talked about, you either want a pre-bagged goodie bag. Or to plan to have an adult with like salad tongs, essentially keeping hands out of the bowl. Serving the kids candy and we'll have hand sanitizer available as well.
Very cool. Scott, Chris, any questions?
No, sounds like a nice event.
Yeah, that's, and Sunday's weather should be better.
Yes, so Scott, Chris, any interest in representing Town Hall?
I'm not sure if I'm available.
I'm not available, we have an event going on in my neighborhood at that time that I'm already at.
I would have done it, but I've got out-of-state company this weekend, so I would have dressed up for the occasion.
Rebecca, I'll do it, I'll, I'll go down for eighteen seventy, so just let me know where I need to. Sit, stand, you know, throw candy at kids as they run by with a salad tongue, of course, and let me know. You know what, my aim, you know, other things have broken in the body, that is correct, but I feel pretty good.
Candy, candy bazookas?
Oh, yeah, you like the shirts?
Yeah.
So we put EMS on standby as Peg wipes out like ten pence.
So actually EMS and the fire, fire truck and one EMS was planning to be there, but they were gonna bring an on-duty person. So it's possible that they're only.
Part of it, okay, so they'll be there for me. Alright, any specific kind of candies, I'm assuming stay away, things from like nuts and things like that, or. Up to me to buy, I I will buy whatever I don't eat, so that's really doesn't, that kind of limits. To like gummy worms, yeah. Oh, okay. Alright, so.
You need a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Boom chakalaka, alright, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
There you go, Rebecca, you're good to go. So, yeah, Rebecca, if you just want to shoot me a note and let me know what time. I need to be there and where I need to hang out, more than happy to help.
Right, I think the only last thing I would add is that if there's any other groups associated with the town that want to participate. We have plenty of space on the lawn, we can certainly grab a corner for people that want to put up a table and have some candy, so. Feel free to share that information with any of the organizations that would like to participate.
Awesome, appreciate that there's, that there's fun coming back to town, so. Between Saturday and Sunday, I think the kids will be, I think they'll be exhausted, probably well sugared, but exhausted.
Nice to have trick-or-treating back.
It is. Alright, well, thank you, Rebecca, we appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this, so, you know, from the heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Rebecca.
And thank Peg for volunteering, sorry.
Alright, I got it, I gotta go buy candy that I won't eat until Sunday, okay. Drop it off and put it in your. So I can't get it, oh, there she is, Julie's here.
Julie's here. Hey. Application's already approved, so.
That's right, well, hello, Mrs. Lee, how are you? You're on mute.
Okay, hi, how's everyone doing?
Alright, hey, so I hear that you're gonna have a Halloween stroll in a couple days.
Yeah, so, um. It's a collaborative effort, so it's recreation and the Lions Club and the seniors and the Council on Aging. Think I got everybody. But we were gonna, I mean, the rain, rain is pretty good, damp for on things. But I just talked to Mr. Campbell today, and so he said that we could use the gym.
Yeah, very nice.
So helpful with that space, so we're gonna have it regardless, it's from two to five, it's either gonna be outside or inside, we're probably gonna make that call. Maybe the day before, just because the ground's gonna be saturated and kids aren't gonna. You know what I mean, in their Halloween costumes, and then. One thing, if you're just coming in, you know, boots and gear, but to be in your Halloween costumes, you have to wear the next day. That won't be too. So, yeah, two to five, we're gonna have games, there's gonna be, Dave from the Lions Club is gonna DJ, it's basically just like the eighteen seventy. Old Halloween dance party we're redoing with some added games. And then then there's also a spooky story reader that's coming that you got, so he's coming around, I think, three thirty. And he's gonna just, I guess, tell spooky stories, he's not even gonna read them, he's just gonna tell them, so that should be cool.
Ooh.
Yeah. Yeah, you're looking at about forty percent chance of rain Saturday.
Okay, yeah. Other forecast is wrong.
There you go.
Yeah.
Forty percent is way better than today and tomorrow and Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be rainy.
Yeah. Well, Julie, the good news, good news is that before you showed up, we approved you.
Already approved it.
I'm so sorry, I just ran in the door, we had a soccer game in Gardner, and that was a hike, and then I was like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm late, so thank you, I appreciate it.
No, thank you, like Rebecca, thank you for bringing back some fun into the town, so, very, very cool.
We're very happy to give you a chance to plug the whole event at the meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
On the video.
Yeah, it'll be super fun, the kids will have fun, so thanks.
Yes, and no pumpkins will be harmed, correct, and just the orange balloons.
What did you say?
I said no pumpkins will be harmed and the pumpkin smashing, it'll just be stomping of the orange balloons.
Right, just stomping of balloons, right, and then we have to clean the birds, we don't want to kill the birds.
We don't want to kill the birds, and this pumpkin carving contest, there, Mrs. Lee, are they actual pumpkins? Or I remember a couple of years ago, somebody snuck in some. Ones that go painted. Yeah, I don't know who that was either.
Actually, high school's doing the same thing now, they're using artificial ones, because the other ones rot. But, yeah, they are gonna do that, but the Lions also donate to the elementary school, so kids can bring those that they're decorating in the school. Or they could bring any pumpkin, any pumpkin you want to bring, and then it's a big contest.
Hey, while Julie is still here, before we let her go, she had asked me a couple of years ago, when we did this in the center of town, we did our junior selectmen. At the time, that's what we were called, was junior select. So Julie asked if this year, with whatever they decide for pumpkin winners, if we can do junior select board members. Um, and have them kick off a meeting like we did before, so.
I'm fine.
Okay, there you go.
Awesome, alright, thank you so much.
Thanks Julie.
Yeah, you got it.
We'll see you this weekend, alrighty.
Bye.
Bye bye. Alright, look at that, hey, check tonight, okay, so, chuckle, daca boom boom. So Margaret will skip over you, if we want to bring back up, uh, Eric and Tom. To talk about the signs and the appointment of the interim chief, and I don't know if it's a good opportunity to talk about, uh. The dog hearing with ACO and stuff like that, so I'll leave that to you. Can we bring up Tom too, please?
It's not letting me bring up Tom, I don't, oh, there he comes.
He's Eric.
There is.
One. And two, okay. Alright Margaret, over to you.
Okay, this is another thing the Traffic Advisory, um, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee worked on. Um, so, uh, Lucy Ayers, uh, back in September submitted two street sign requ- request forums. Uh, one was for a reduced speed ahead sign, and the other was for no engine brake sign. Using the street sign request form, um, the sign reduced speed ahead receives unanimous recommendations from Fire, Police and Highway. And the sign for no engine brakes, um, received, oh, I actually was, is not recommended by all three of them. So, um, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee discussed the need for an engine brake bylaw. So, um, Chief, if you could just elaborate a little bit more on that, um, uh, the, but the need for the bylaw prior to putting up the sign, that would be good.
I said, I guess first of all, I talked about this a few minutes ago in the report, does everyone know what the, what a Jake Brake or an Engine Brake is? To, you know, so the, the trucks use it to, you know, utilize the, the, the transmission, the exhaust gases to, to slow the vehicle down. So, we've got some complaints, um, actually, we had Rebecca on early from, from her family, um, you know, she lives right in the center of town. And from Lucy and, and some discussion from others, um, that with, with the truck traffic we have, and we know with the projects that are going on in town in our area. We have a lot of tractor trailers. So, wh- what this, this request is to, to limit that use, you know, we weren't comfortable with, with putting up a sign. That, you know, basically implies that it's, it's illegal, because it's not. So what, what our recommendation is, and, and there's gonna be, have to be more discussion at the level of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee on, on language. Is to develop a bylaw for the next, for annual town meeting, um, that would im- impose a Jake Brake restriction within the community. You know, I don't, I think, um, you know, we, one of the discussions we also had is that, you know, we have some people in town that are in the trucking business that are experts. And that, um, that the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee could solicit some feedback from and, and find out. You know, maybe there's certain roads we restrict or certain areas restrict, or it's, it's an outright ban throughout town. Um, so it's something that, that needs to be examined further before we put up a sign that, that limits a legal activity.
Would you suggest, I'm sorry, would you suggest putting up the, uh, the blinky sign, um, in, in lieu of that for now?
We, we had talked to Lucy about that, um, because that, that was one of the things that we, we want to study, because, you know, one of her, um, complaints is speed. Is to actually see what the speed of, of vehicles are, so that, um, you know, those signs and, and not necessarily the, the blinky, the full signboard. But utilizing the new, the new signs, um, to gather data to, um, to see what the, the vehicle traffic is. So that the, the actual signboard too is something that I think, um, with the discussion with Fred could be placed around town, uh. Just as a, as a warning, you know, not as a warning, but it's more informational to, to truck drivers for, you know, try and restrict the use of, uh, of engine brakes.
So Margaret, are you looking for a motion on?
Yes, I, I, um, yeah, my, my recommendation is aligned with, um, Highway Police and Fire on these. I recommend that the board approve the reduced speed ahead sign, um, and that the board hold on the, uh, no engine brake sign. And that we look at other options, uh, before adopting a bylaw.
Scott, Chris?
I, I'm fine with those recommendations.
I would, yeah, I would, go ahead.
I was about to say, I think Chris is about to make a motion.
Yes, I was just, uh, gonna say I would, uh, support Margaret's recommendation for approving the reduced speed ahead sign.
I will second.
Alright, uh, lots of discussion, motion and second, uh, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Alright, needs your reduced speed ahead sign, um, Margaret, for the no engine breaker, or Tom or Eric. Um, can we put like a timeframe on when we can have discussions on this, because I just don't want it to be one of those items that gets lost in the shuffle.
Well, um, because it's a bylaw, I can add it to the list of possible bylaws for the Spring Town Meeting. Um, so, uh, we can look at it, look at it in that context.
Yeah, that would be great, I would just, uh, I would just hate to lose it, uh, losing in traffic, okay. Um, so next up is the recommendation to appoint an interim police chief.
Oh, I'm, hold on, I've gotta dig that out.
It's here somewhere. I know, we're zipping around, we're zipping around on the agenda.
Uh, I, uh, as you know, Chief Galvin's gonna be leaving, uh, the town's employment on October twenty-ninth. Um, the search and selection process for the permanent chief is well underway. Um, but this is a, this is a post, um, a leadership post that should not be unfilled for any period of time. Therefore, I recommend, um, that Sergeant Eric Shartner be appointed to the position of interim police chief until the permanent chief's start date. Um, I further recommend that he be paid a weekly all-inclusive salary of two thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. To be paid from the police chief's salary account, uh, during the term of this interim appointment.
So I, I would make a motion to, uh, support Margaret's recommendation.
I would second.
Alright, um, any other further questions on this?
Just want to thank Sergeant Shartner for stepping up, um, to do this.
Thank you very much.
Alright, uh, no other questions, uh, I'll start, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
If I. And I want to wish you the best, Tom.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, and, you know, it's been, uh, it's been fun, you know, we've had a lot, a lot of good times, we've made a lot of progress, uh, in just over eight years. Um, you know, you, you made a good choice in, in elevating Eric at this point, and I think it's gonna keep some continuity about what, what's going on. And he's very much aware of what needs to happen, um, you know, and where we stand, especially as, as it relates to police reform. So, you know, you have a, a solid, good, uh, you know, candidate here in Eric for the permanent position as well. Um, and, and I urge you really to consider that as, as the town moves forward.
And I, and I want to thank you too, Eric, for stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
And Eric, please know, obviously, if there's anything that you need, you know, come to us. Uh, Margaret's just right upstairs and she'll flag the rest of us down for you, but, uh.
That's the best thing about Berlin, you're not alone.
That's a small town, you know where to find us. Alright, uh, Margaret, anything else for Tom and Eric, or can we?
Oh, I have no idea, let's see.
The only other thing that might approve, might, um, maybe apply to them is the dangerous dog and the animal control reports.
That's it, yes. I think Chief is, I think Chief's going to be around, um, for the duration, um, I don't know if Eric plans to stay, um, uh, but, um, yeah. They might be called upon for input there too.
Okay, so nothing that we need from them right now?
Um, not unless you want to bump up that, uh, that item.
No, let's bump it up, we got them, let's, uh, let's just take care of it and then we'll zip back to everything else.
Uh, so the board previously saw some draft procedures back in May. This, uh, these are being brought back to, um, you know, due to some recent, recent activity that could potentially result, um, in a nuisance or dangerous dog hearing. I think it is best practice to put these procedures in place and not wait until, you know, waiting to, you know, until we have to be reactionary, uh, to do it. So, these draft, um, these draft procedures are put together for you for your review, um, they do not have to be approved today. Um, I really would like you to thoroughly review them, and I, I, most importantly, I want them to be understandable. Because these are steps that the board follows during a public hearing on a nuisance or dangerous dog. So I just want, I want to be sure that, um, they're, they're readable, they're not, you know, they're not over the top and you could easily follow them. So the only other thing that, um, that we'll be adding to this is a reference to the general bylaw, and I want to thank Mary for pointing this out. Article eleven, um, dogs, um, animal control, um, we have a bylaw, it's, um. It's a pretty convoluted bylaw, but there is one section of the bylaw, section F, uh, that does pertain to this particular issue. Um, with nuisance and dangerous dog hearing, so I will put a reference to that in, but it's certainly by no means going to guide the board. In fact, section F of that bylaw basically reflects everything the statute says already. So, um, we'll, we'll put a reference to that in the back as appendix C.
So are you looking for feedback returned to you, uh, enough for discussion a week from tonight?
Please, yes, yeah.
Alright, I'll put that on the agenda for next week.
I, I had a chance to look at, look at this, and I really thought it was very good. Uh, I didn't see anything that really stuck out as needing any changes, um, just to let you know, that's how I feel about it right now.
Thank you. Better to have the guidelines in place before.
Something happens, correct.
We need it.
Yeah, Chris, were you on the board the last time we did a hearing? I think we've only done one since I've been here.
I, I don't think so, no, I think.
And I can say from experience, it was kind of a painful process then.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think to have.
It is, and it has to be very, very structured, very rigidly.
And, and it wasn't, so that's why I think to have something like this in place.
Yeah, no, I could see what, how this would really help.
Okay, alright, so comments back to you Margaret by Thursday to give you a chance to regroup and review and then out for discussion next Monday?
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Okay. Alright, uh, anything else at the moment for Eric and Tom, we know that we'll need Tom back in a bit, um, but anything else right now to bring up while we're, we're here? While all parties are here, okay, alright, um, so again, Eric, thank you, uh, we're forward to working with you, Tom, best of luck, and we'll talk to you shortly.
Margaret, if, if I'm not in the meeting right away, I'll be poking around upstairs, so just either yell out the window or, um, or shoot me back.
Alright, I'll yell, thank you.
Throw some candy at him, thank you guys, we'll talk to you soon. Alright, so where are we, where are we, where are we, Margaret, you are up for your TA report.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about rain, so I just wanted to give everyone a heads up, yeah, we're expecting some rain. Uh, possibly four inches and high winds, so everyone should take out their emergency preparedness kits. And, uh, get ready for some possible power outages, uh, be careful when driving, turn around, don't drown. You never know what's under those big puddles in the roads, so, um, it's going to be.
Brown, is that like?
Turn around, don't drown. It's gonna be. It's going to be, it's gonna be a doozy, so, uh, and that's gonna be through tomorrow night with some clearing on Wednesday morning. So we're gonna be getting inundated with rain. Um, I did, I, I mean, I prepared, I have my written report here, so, uh, we mentioned, I mentioned that, um, the search and selection process for police chief is well underway. Uh, as the assessment center is gonna be conducted next week, uh, early next week. Um, at which time, uh, the list of candidates will be further narrowed for final interviews with the board on November ninth. Um, I believe, um, I believe there's interest in conducting the final interviews in person. And I would support that as, as well, so we'll go ahead and book a room and make sure that the agenda notes, um, that room for in-person interviews. Mary, if you could, um, if you could arrange that, um, to make sure we have a room, that'd be great, thanks.
Do you want to sit down the end of the hall, where it probably has the most room?
I think here, I, hearing room if it's available.
Okay.
Public Safety Administrative Assistant, as you know, has started today, and, uh, I understand she was very excited. And she's gonna be a great, she's gonna be a great addition to our team. I was hoping that, um, Sandra Pendergast, uh, applicant, uh, candidate for the eighteen seventy Town Hall Manager would be here tonight. For me to introduce her, I will be making a recommendation tonight on her appointment as the eighteen seventy Town Hall Manager to be effective, uh, November eighth, so we'll get to that. Uh, HR benefits, now you'll recall that the board, uh, back in the spring, the board adopted, or is it last winter? Board adopted Mass General Law Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one to twenty-three, which allows the board to make plan design changes to the town's health insurance. The board at that time, um, decided that, um, it would wait to actually invoke those sections. Um, thereby actually making some changes, uh, to plan design in town. Uh, I'm bringing this up because the board, I think the board's intent was to look at this a year from when you last looked at it. And we're about heading into the budget process now. Um, should the board invoke, uh, Sections twenty-one through twenty-three, um, a public employee committee would have to be established. And would have a very limited time to negotiate an agreement on the plan design changes would have to, which would have to match up to, uh, GIC benchmarks. And it would also include provisions for, uh, mitigation, um, there's a first-year discount of twenty-five percent, uh, for employees and the town. And, um, uh, possibly future mitigation as well, so, um. I wanted to bring this to your attention again in preparation for the budget process. Uh, Jill has advised that the sections would have to be invoked by January if the board so decides to move in this direction. Because Maya sets their, uh, rate range at that point, so we'd want to be aligned with that. Um, I will invite Jill to an upcoming select board meeting to discuss this in further detail well before, um, well before. I'd say probably in the next, within the next month, she could come in and visit the board and talk about this. Uh, but she and I met with Labor Counsel, uh, John Foskett, uh, to discuss this in the, um, in the context of, uh, exploring retiree health insurance benefits. Um, which was, um, which is included in the, uh, cooking company contract. And whether or not mitigation, uh, could be used in lieu of, um, statute acceptance, uh, for retiree health insurance, so, more on that. Um, there are a couple of, um, the class action litigation notices that we've received, and I've registered for both of these. The first is PFAS Cost Recovery Program, um, this Napoli, um, Skolnick, uh, and Hank Notton actually is the lead on this, um, in the litigation. Uh, is representing water utility systems, um, and this is a nationwide, um, a nationwide thing. But, um, municipalities are encouraged, uh, to sign on, so after a little bit of back and forth with Hank. Um, and letting him, you know, reminding him that the town is not a public water supplier. Um, he said it might still be in the town's interest, uh, to register for this and to participate in the litigation, should the board so decide to do that. Uh, because, um, it would allow the town the opportunity to recover costs for residents. And, um, and, um, costs, uh, to remediate their well should PFAS, uh, be found. So, um, Hank Notton is invited, is gonna, is going to be attending the Select Board's November twenty-ninth meeting. At seven twenty to present additional information on this, um, I'm also gonna reach out to the Board of Health to invite them. Since this, um, since private wells are a Board of Health matter. And then the other, um, piece of, um, class action litigation is a national opioid settlement. The Mass Attorney, uh, State's Attorney General has signed on, uh, two settlements against major pharmaceutical distributors and manufacturers. Um, and, um, the settlements actually, uh, the settlements actually, uh, provide, uh, monetary, um, reimbursements. To states that are affected, and the state, it states, the Commonwealth will reallocate funds to municipalities who register, um, to participate in this. And this would allow each municipality to put in place, um, some, um, opioid, um, prevention, uh, measures. In addition to what the AG's office will be doing, uh, it also forces these manufacturers and distributors, distributors to put safeguards in place. Um, to help, uh, begin controlling the opioid, uh, crisis in the country. So I've registered the town for this, but it's going to be the Select Board that ultimately decides, uh, whether to participate in the settlement. Still be documentation coming in, more information will be, uh, coming forth to the Select Board. We met with, um, uh, Chief and I met with CMRPC, Transportation Planners, last week. We talked about the Route sixty-two corridor and CMRPC is going to be doing a corridor study for. We talked about the Route 62 corridor and CMRPC is going to be doing a corridor study for us as a precursor to a possible tip project or even smaller projects through the Complete Streets Program or otherwise. We should have the corridor study received by the spring of 2022. So I'm really looking forward to that, that, because that's gonna provide us guidance as, as initial measures in getting some infrastructure work done. And then finally, I met with Lynn Ryan, ACABET School Committee Member, and Ernie Hool, ACABET Superintendent, and their new business manager, Maria Silva, last week virtually. And Ernie explained that Desi has changed admission rules for school districts and for vocational school districts. It's requiring, it's requiring, the reason that they're changing, they've changed the rules is to alleviate any perception of discrimination and promote equal access to education. So what this is going to result in is a lottery that ACABET will do. They will accept applications, do informational interviews and receive letter of recommendations. And then students will be put into a pool of in-district students. So Ernie expressed concern about equitable, equitable access to ACABET among member communities through this new system that Desi has put in place. So ACABET has decided to put a three-year average enrollment for each town that would, that would stabilize the enrollment for each town. Berlin has averaged nine to 10 slots at a minimum. If more students apply, they would be put into the lottery for, for slots to be filled. What this is going, and there will be preference given to in-district students. So what this is going to result in is a decline in acceptance of out-of-district students. And that over a period of time, period of few years, is gonna create a budget impact. But Ernie has said, and he'll explain this in further detail as we move into the budget process, that they are trying, the, the way they're approaching this through the three-year average is to try to mitigate any kind of spikes in enrollment through any of the member towns. And in turn, any of the member towns being overlooked and not, not being able to send their students there. And then finally, we received a free cash figure today. Certified free cash figure today is probably the largest the town has seen ever. It's $2.1 million. And without getting into details, because we still have to parse out all the details of what went into free cash. Some of the big nuts are, the biggest, I think the biggest nut is actually the free cash base that we put into this year's free cash, which was $858,000 plus. So that was a big contributor of certified free cash this year. Additionally, for, for actual revenues received versus actual expenses incurred in our operating budget through the general fund, town departments have just not spent all of their money. There's about $500,000 that rolled in to free cash from that. And then finally, overlay. So the town had accumulated a lot of funding in the overlay and hadn't kept, you know, hadn't been having to issue abatements and exemptions through that overlay. This past year, significant abatements were issued. And previously, because of the, the, the large sum in the overlay account, it was, it was raised on our recap. So that counted against our free cash previously. This year, because of the drawdown on overlay, we're looking at an additional $400,000 that has been added to our, to our certified free cash because of the large abatements that have, that were issued. One of them being over $160,000 to Solomon Pond Mall. So those are the big nuts and that's by and large the biggest contributors to our certified free cash this year. You know, while you could look at some of these contributors as recurring, we certainly hope that we're not gonna be issuing abatements to the tune of, you know, $200,000. So every year, let's hope not. So, you know, I think we, we see that as, as some non-recurring funding going into, going into free cash. We will have to be cognizant of the base that we leave at the end of the year. But these past two years have just been so unpredictable and so extraordinary that we've been ultra, ultra conservative. So that's all I have.
I mean, kudos to the department for that, you know, and for those people either here tonight or those watching and thinking, woo-hoo, you know, 2.1 free, 2.1 in free cash doesn't mean a spending free for all and it's an open checkbook. You know, I can see, I can see June sitting there doing this, even though she's not on camera, she can be like, nope. Because in June and Margaret and Amy, we trust, so.
Well, and you know, you bring up a really good point because the, the Finance Committee established free cash guidelines two years ago, right before COVID, actually. And it's times like this that we really need to look at the free cash guidelines. We need to stick to a plan and make sure that, that we're doing the right thing with our residents' money.
See, I'm, I'm a little worried on the other side of the coin in that it means that our budget for the previous fiscal year, we taxed a half million dollars more than we should, we needed to. And that the budgets were padded by a half million dollars.
But we have to remember that departments weren't spending. We, we had costs, we had expenditure controls in place. So I don't wanna look at that as a permanent issue either. It's.
No, but I think it's what, what, when we're looking at budgets, we have to be careful. Because I think it, although some of the reduce, reduction in spending was appropriate, but penny wise and pon foolish, as we saved a dollar now to spend $3 later on. But some of it is probably things we didn't need to buy in the first place and shouldn't have been in the budget and could have resulted in lower taxes across town. And so I think when we're looking at the budget is trying to figure out of the money that wasn't spent that became free cash, which one of those are things that had it not been a panic, pandemic crisis year, we probably should have spent anyway because it's gonna cost us more money later. But what is things we really don't need as a town and could do without?
Yeah, these are things that we have to be examined in the budget process every year. Yeah.
Right.
Is there, Ms. Keith? Any questions for Mrs. Nattowitz?
No, I think she covered everything that I was looking for.
All right.
I, I have one more thing too.
Okay.
I, I'm wondering whether we should have as a, a standing agenda item, open positions and appointing open positions. Because again, I think in our hiring environment, a quick turnaround is important. And so when they have an interview on Friday that they suddenly like somebody, if we have standing, the like here, the open position is a point if they're available. We can always pull them off the gender and say that one's just not ready to appoint yet. But, you know, the interviews that the police had today, had it been on the agenda from Thursday, we might have been able to appoint today. You know, maybe with a contingency, but we speed along those hires, we get these people here faster. It's just less time we have vacancies.
Yeah. Really good point. I'm kinda hoping we don't have to continue at this rate, but very, very good point. We do have to move quickly.
All right. So Margaret, when we meet on Thursday, we can just drop it as a, an item under old business. And if we don't have any, we'll just skip it. And if we do, then we'll chat and go.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, this today, so the, the part-time officers probably, I, I, well. But you know, the, yeah, if, if I get something on a Friday, I wanna be able to, to take care of it right away. So, okay.
Well, and frankly, today is because it wasn't on the agenda, there was no urgency for you to try to see if you could squeeze out those last little details before the meeting. If you knew it was on the agenda and we could have done a real offer on Tuesday if we put together, you know, sometimes the, the energy finds itself to get it done.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not a, we're, we're not in the middle of a market that we can afford to wait around and, and allow candidates, you know, just to kinda drag candidates along. It's not that environment.
Right. They're gonna take that first bet, good offer.
Yeah. Zipping down, I think it was, I think I was on the bike. And now it's up to $16,000 for seasonal plow drivers. So it was 10, honestly, it was 10 about a month ago and it's up to 16 now. So. So Margaret, you had mentioned in your TA report, since we're agenda skipping, we might as well just continue to skip. Do you wanna talk about appointment to the 1870 Town Hall Manager while you have your report?
Yes. I'm sorry, Sandra's not here. I'll invite her to the next, maybe the next meeting. All right. So I had a chance to meet with, with Sandra last week. She, she was actually the only applicant for this position, but she was very proactive and had actually submitted her application prior to the job posting being put up. So Sandra has years of experience in an office setting. She's performed administrative and financial duties. She's got a bachelor's degree in business administration. And she is a very personable individual who I think would be excellent in this position. And so I recommend that the Select Board appoint Sandra Pendergast to this part-time, non-benefited department head position of 1870 Town Hall Manager at a starting rate of 20 oh four an hour, grade five, step six.
Second, I think she'll make a great addition to your team.
I think she will as well.
Yep. All right. Quick, we gotta lock her in. Stone eye.
Hockers eye.
There you go. Done.
I'll let her know.
See how quickly we can move based on Scott's recommendation.
Yes. I apologize. Her starting date will be November, Monday, November 8, 2021. And, and I personally cannot wait for her to start.
All right. Awesome. So thank you, Sandra. You know, if you're watching this on playback, appreciate you reaching out to us. So thank you. All right. So where are we, where are we, where are we? Margaret, down to old business, your favorite special town meeting updates, if any.
Well, you'll be going into this a lot more on Thursday night at Coffee Talk. And there's really no action the board needs to take tonight. I just wanted to, to share draft motions with you. These draft motions are gonna be shared with all of the article sponsors, requesters and town council to be sure that everything is in proper form. There were a couple of small edits after the board voted the warrant. There were a couple of small edits that we made to the warrant. One of them was Eloise pointed out that the 1870 Town Hall is only a kind of a ceremonial name and it's not the official name of the town hall. So any reference to 1870 Town Hall, as far as posting warrants, has been removed from Article 1. Article 3, third modification of the Development Agreement with River Bridge. I caught, let's see, I caught something in, under phase. Oh gosh, I think it's phase, phase one, where it had previously read installation of separate pedestrian and bicycle bridge over Northbrook. But the obligation also includes sidewalk connections and upgrades in that area. So I added that. And we also removed, after town council reviewed this, we removed some wording from the River Run property article where it said included but not limited to, because we didn't wanna create confusion that there could be parcels outside of the River Run parcel that were available. So that's been removed. I'm just flying through this to see if there's anything else. Yes. The Capital Planning Committee has recommended, has unanimously recommended all of the items in the supplemental capital budget grid. And on the, on the, item number two, the old fire station roof repair or replacement, the Capital Planning Committee felt that we shouldn't, we shouldn't restrict ourselves to replacing a rubber membrane roof with a rubber membrane roof and allow further, further options for roof types. So the reference to a replacement of EPDM has been removed from that item. Meanwhile, we are working with CMRPC to see if we can put together an application for funding the comprehensive facilities assessment. And that's pretty much, there were a couple of minor changes to the CPA articles, but overall, they have not, they have not changed substantively. And I think that's it.
So Margaret, on page two, Article seven.
Motion sheet or, or warrant?
I think it was the motion sheet.
Okay. Article seven.
I believe it's Article seven and it, it was where Capital Planning Committee supported. And it said one through six.
It's, it's one through five. Thank you. I actually did that twice when I was creating the motions. I put six and I was like, there is no six. All right. I'll change that to five.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. So look those motions over and let me know if you have any additional questions or comments on them. The sponsors and requesters of articles have been encouraged and urged to attend Coffee Talk on Thursday night so they can speak to their, their articles.
All right. Scott, any questions on the, no, okay. All right. All right. So we are down to TA recommendation to extend Historical Commission's use of the old fire station for temporary storage needs.
Yeah, this will be the second extension request going to the board. I feel that it is critical to allow the Historical Commission to continue to use the old fire station because of its proximity to the Bullard House to use it for the temporary storage of certain items. And, you know, otherwise the work on the, the Bullard House, which is beginning to progress, it would be, would be impeded with these, with these items. So I believe it's, it's important to allow them to continue to use the old fire station for it. So my recommendation is that the timeline be further extended to June 30, 2022. And if the board would like to not have to have this brought to them again in the future, the act actually allows me to manage and oversee the use of our town buildings. So we could alleviate the need of, for this having to come to the board again. So, or it's prerogative.
So Margaret.
Either way, either way, I rec, either way, I recommend the extension.
I have a question. Is there any way that we can get from Historical a list of what their inventory is? I don't think that we ever got a full list, nor did we ever get a, this is questionable, we really don't need it. This needs to be looked at. This is just something that someone dropped off that truly does not need to be here.
Are you talking about the items in the old fire station? I, I believe, I can't speak for them, but I believe that they're large enough items that they, and in, you know, inventorying or putting a list together of those items would, would be, would be that burdensome. I can certainly check with the chair.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I would, it's larger, but I would love to know what we're storing from all departments and all buildings. That I think that, you know, we have vehicles and trucks and wagons and other stuff that take up way more space than 15 historic doors that might or might not have some great historic significance. That is something I wouldn't be a good judge of. And I think we should start thinking of this beyond just this one group of people when it comes to storage and town buildings.
Agreed.
There are at least, there are at least two departments and two outside entities that are storing things at the old fire station right now. So.
It's like every building around town. You, you go to the old highway bar, there's a whole bunch of things in there. So which are vehicles that don't exist on our vehicle inventory sheet. I don't believe that, that, that maybe we as a town can get rid of. And if we get rid of things, you know, yard sale, dumpster fire, I don't know.
Real space, brim field.
Yeah. There you go. No, and then, and that's my concern too, that somebody thinks that it's like, oh, we need this. Let's stick it in a building and then it's never to be seen again. You know, like the ambulance that was brought up from the bay when we got another piece of equipment. Has anyone seen it since it got brought up? No. Does anyone know it's in there? Probably not. I think there's something stored in the building down by the tennis courts. Anybody idea what's in it? No. Anybody seen it?
Old sweeper. Yeah. I, I, I mean, I think, again, I still think we, we, we try to do the, the inventory of buildings and how they're used. But I think there are some things that, like, like the, the old barn down by the tennis courts has one building in it. The Highway Department has several buildings in town. We just moved that to one of the other buildings and we tear down that barn so that the South Common is, can be prettier.
Yeah.
Now, I, I say that, I still wanna check with Historical to make sure there's nothing sort of sacred about that building there. But, but, you know, I think that might be one of the easier ones because we're not gonna sell that land to someone else. And that building is just a shell. It doesn't have much else on it. And so maybe that's the beginnings of trying to clean up our inventory of buildings.
Agreed. Margaret, you had mentioned that you were getting, looking for a grant to.
I'm working with CMRPC right now to put together an application for the comprehensive facilities assessment. Yeah.
So I would.
That would be through CCC. Sorry.
So I would. support Margaret's recommendation to extend the Historical Commission's use of the old fire station for storage. And I have no problem if she takes this on and lets us know when there's a date that need, you know, it's going by where, you know, it needs to be extended or not extended or whatever.
Yeah, I personally feel that like what is stored in what building is is too low to, I know it's an important task, but it's not sort of Board of Selectmen worthy of what is stored in what building. I I think, you know, if we run out of space or there are conflicts, maybe we get involved, but on a day to day basis, what is stored in what building? I think we have better things to do at Select Board meeting times.
That was my motion.
Yes.
Okay, did you? Okay.
He started it and then just kind of kept going. You know, kind of like the agenda, we're doing this. All right. Stoneeye?
Hawkins eye.
Keith, I.
And Margaret, you know, even though it falls under your purvie, honestly, if there's something that you need, please don't. Please don't play like super cape and take it on.
I'd love to do a complete buildings walkthrough. This is something that we've planned ever since I arrived and, you know, unfortunately, that's been waylaid, and I I do think there could be better use of some of the buildings. So we'll work.
I like, I like eBay. What was the town that sold their fire truck on eBay? It was around here. Was it Pittsburgh? Pittsburgh, Limmerston, they did. They they put their truck on eBay and they got rid of it and got a crap ton of money. All right, let's see. All right, so that's done. New business, I think we took care of. Board questions, comments, liaison updates. Chris, Scott?
I don't have anything tonight.
Health insurance changes. I know one of the reasons why we waited a little bit is that the union had some concerns and wanted to be sort of a partner in designing new plans. But I just, we've all gotten distracted. There's not been sort of ongoing meetings of other changes they would like that we can sort of find a compromise that's short of just invoking this, correct?
Not through, not through IAC, not through the IAC anyway. The PEC that would be formed through this process would be a way to to negotiate the plan design changes.
We also wanted to do this. We're just the starting of contract negotiations, too. I just wanted to make sure that there's anything there that we didn't sort of close things off, and both contracts are taken care of now at this point, haven't we? Police and Fire? Or we just take it there.
That's what we're meeting an executive session to discuss police union strategy, just we're going to provide updates to you.
All right, and I just had a couple. Margaret, I know when we talked last week. Now that you found the electric bill that the town pays, plugs in the center of town. Has Fred or Jim reached out to the town electrician?
Yes, Fred said he was going to. I I I haven't gotten confirmation from him that he did. But he said he was definitely going to, and I gave him the account number and everything. So I'm I'm going to be talking with Fred tomorrow for a little bit, so I'll check with him on that, too.
Right. Follow up on an email we received about the demolition down on behind the school where a couple of women had gotten cut from the glass debris that was down there. Do you know if Chief has followed up on that?
Mary reached out to Julie to ask for the names, and we we are in touch with Maya. So Maya is aware of this. They can't process anything without details on on any claims. So if they don't come forward with claims, it's not a lot we can do.
I don't know anything about that.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Well, the, yeah, go ahead, Peg.
So there was, do you remember what was the last meeting? Chief Clark was here and he said that they were doing some crunching of the cars down behind the school where they were practicing that, well, apparently the.
That was at Tohato, correct?
No, from Memorial.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, down in the back, I think near the same way you pick up your sand. And unfortunately, the cars were left there longer and there was glass all over the place and there's a boot camp that happened somewhere down there, and I don't know if it was during that or another event that a couple of women got hurt, sustained some, I don't know the extent of their injuries because of the broken glass. So there was concern that there was no notification given to anybody. I guess when boot camp showed up and they saw the smashed cars, they got concerned and actually, you know, did like a nine one one call to only find out that it was practice. So in the email that we received, I thought you guys were on, and I know that.
I think I think I do remember the email now, but I Yeah, for some reason, I thought that it was over at at Tohato.
No, so there was just a comment that a couple of women had gotten hurt, and I just wanted to make sure that they were taken care of. And then there was an ask that if this was ever done again, or when it's done again, that people are notified. So, you know, kids aren't playing down there, or it's roped off, or the debris is picked up in a timely manner and not left for a couple of days.
Yeah.
Okay. I did reach out on the Smithsonian. I have not heard anything. I don't know whether to, I know, I don't know whether to take that as good or good or bad on that. And the grants, we won't hear for the ADA grants, we won't hear until December. But that's okay. We have enough stuff to get us through until then.
We sure do.
Yeah, I'll follow. I will follow up with Jennifer. I can't remember her last name on the Smithsonian with that and just say, hey, we're hearing that CMR PC is, you know, heard that towns are being notified. Where's Berlin in that? Because I'd like to know either way. And I think that's all I got. All right. So as Margaret mentioned, the board will enter, again, let me bring this over here. So I'm looking at you when I'm reading it. The board will enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law. Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating purpose of the public body. And that's Chair so declares, Berlin Police Union Local two sixty four M C O P. We will return to open session only to adjourn the meeting.
Are we going to actually return to open session? Are we going to just adjourn from executive session? Because we have no more business than open session.
Yeah, just adjourn. Yeah, adjourn from executive session will record the adjournment time.
Okay, all right. So because we're not all in one spot, we need a vote. Stoneeye?
Hawkins eye.
Keith, I.
All right. Thank you all for coming tonight. Stay safe, build your arc, and we'll see you hopefully on Thursday, and if not, definitely on Monday.